Would you lead us in pledge tonight?
Pledge allegiance.
To the pride of the United States of America. To give the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day that you allowed us to come and have a quorum today. We thank you for everybody that's here, for city staff, and for anybody that shows up in here tonight. God, we ask for your direction. We ask for your grace and your mercy, in Jesus' name.
Nina, roll call.
Councillor Howard.
Here.
Councillor Lorenz.
Here.
Councillor Watson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
The quorum is declared.
Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Approval consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from... Yeah, it's last time.
April fourth.
April fourth. And review and approval of accounts payable.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Been moved in second to approve the consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting from April fourth. Review and approval of accounts payable. Any more discussion? Did you get your answer about tattoos?
I didn't. You'll have to do some research for us.
Yes.
Nina?
Councillor Howard.
Yes.
Councillor Lorenz.
Yes.
Councillor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Proclamation, communications, and appointments. Department of Addison Monogran, twice the weapon paid, tree board.
Good evening, City Council. In your packet, you should have an email from Addison Monogran to petition City Council to be appointed a member of the tree board. She is with the High School's Future Farmers of America Organization. Our tree board has taken a huge hit over the last year and a half with members moving out of the area or just simply not being able to serve anymore. We're down to two, Argo Alexander and Currysell. So we are looking desperately for new members, and we invited the FFA to come attend a couple of our meetings. And Addison, really nice young lady, has graciously decided that she would like to participate on the multi bases. So I would ask Council to please nominate her.
Make a motion to appoint Addison Monogran to the tree board.
Second.
Been moved in second to appoint Addison Monogran to the tree board. Is there any discussion? Nina?
Councillor Howard.
Yes.
Councillor Lorenz.
Aye.
Councillor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to appoint Addison Monogran to the tree board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Addison.
You want them back?
Arbor Day proclamation.
Read it, I'll find it.
I didn't print it out.
Now I'm putting it in the spot. Gigi?
Proclamation for the Tree City USA and Arbor Day Foundation program. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a billion trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Dale Becker, mayor of the city of Manavista, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four Arbor Day. And on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the city of Manavista will celebrate Arbor Day at two P M. at the Racegaff tree. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we would encourage all citizens to plant in careful trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signing this date, April eighteenth of twenty twenty-four.
Always like that. Thank you, Rob. Citizen comments, special presentations? Anyone who wants to be a citizen for a minute? Okay, no special presentations. We'll go to ordinances. Ordinance nine-two-six. An amendment directing codification of an amendment to the Monavista City Charter passed by the Monavista City Election on November third, twenty fifteen, concerning publication by title only of city ordinances.
Mayor and council, we're going back through a lot of the codification and questions, Jerry, now and then, well, what's our authority to publish by title only? Dug into the election, saw that it was passed by title only on November the third, twenty fifteen. But we don't seem to have a ordinance that codifies that. So this is an ordinance codifying that. And it simply says that whereas the Monavista City Charter, section twenty-five, publication was amended by the city electorate on November the third, twenty fifteen, at the city's regular election by including following language concerning the charter provision, section twenty-five, requiring publishing in full, ordinance is passed by the city council to wit, provided further that this requirement may be satisfied by publishing ordinances by title only rather than publishing the ordinance in full in a newspaper of general circulation within the city, and whereas this amendment should be codified in charter provisions of the Monavista municipal code, and whereas the city council should have the option of publishing ordinances other than those ordinances required by law to be published in full for those ordinances which by their nature, city council determines should be published in full by title only. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Monavista that city ordinances may be published by title only unless the ordinance is required by law to be published in full. When the city council determines the publication in full. So this gives you some flexibility also in publishing your ordinances because sometimes you might want an ordinance published in full, just as a part of the nature of the ordinance. And sometimes, like codification, for example, that ordinance has to be published in full by state law. So that's what this does is put this into codification form, what you did back in twenty fifteen. People did, actually.
So it would be first reading, then, councillor?
Yes, it would be the first reading.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance nine-twenty-six, inserting the publication by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded.
First reading.
We're going to adopt ordinance number nine-two-six, an ordinance directing codification of an amendment to the Monavista City Charter passed by the Monavista City Election on November third, twenty fifteen, concerning publication by title only of city ordinances. Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Councillor Howard.
Aye.
Councillor Lorenz.
Aye.
Councillor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine-twenty-six, an ordinance directing codification of an amendment to the Monavista City Charter passed by the Monavista City Election on November third, twenty fifteen, concerning publication by title only of the city ordinance on first reading. Six eleven P M.
Contracts, agreements, and leases. Award twenty twenty-four sewer cleaning camera project.
So councils, before you tonight is a recommendation to award a contract for the twenty twenty-four sewer cleaning camera project to DRC Construction Services for a sum of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents. The project was bid on March thirteenth and bid openings were conducted on April third. There were three bidders. All three bidders met the minimum qualifications and bid specifications. All three bids came within the specified budget. DRC Construction Services appeared to be the lowest bid. The tabulation is with the sheet I gave you. Heavy cleaning costs are all similar, and each of the bids appear to have the same level of service and similar exclusions. The largest differences in it is the unit cost for the cleaning and the mobilization. So at this time, I would like to recommend to council to award the twenty twenty-four sewer cleaning camera project to DRC Services for the sum of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents. And I would open that up for any questions. Back in two thousand seventeen, DRC Services was actually a subcontractor when we were doing our initial collection system. So they were working for Nsitu Farm, and we had very good luck with them. So even though there's a huge gap between the three bidders, I'm comfortable that DRC can do the job.
Where are they from?
They're actually from Sedalia. Where they office comes out of. And the other two companies, Timberline is at Breckenridge, they're in South Kenny, and then Kinetic Industries is up in Denver, right around the conversation.
Mr. Mayor? So Rob, about how long will this project take?
About two weeks.
And this comes out of our enterprise funding?
Yes, yes.
And I guess since DRC has been here in the past, they have a good idea of what they're getting into and the amount of time it's going to take?
They have, they have a good idea. We did put a clause, we have normal cleaning, and then we went ahead and specified heavy cleaning, which would include anything where they have to physically get down in a manhole, dig out a rock, or get rid of roots or anything like that. Those areas are considered heavy cleaning. Things, just getting the grit and sand out of the lines. So we have that. All three companies have pretty close to the same. It ranges from three hundred dollars per hour up to three hundred and fifty dollars per hour. They came in at right at twenty-three, twenty-five. So all three bidders are very close. Our budget that was approved by city council back in December was a hundred thousand dollars. So we have more than ample funds for any unforeseen heavy cleaning that might go on. So I'm really comfortable providing this company with that, so.
And so if there are overages, do we kind of have a max?
Depends on what they come up with. They've done it before. So we've cleaned every line in the city. We ended in two thousand eighteen, and so every line's been touched. Around two thousand eighteen, so two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, everything in the city had been done. So we've only got that period of time, whereas the first clean was over a decade. So we shouldn't have anything other than a few sections of roots and stuff that we'll have. And then the camera will give us a better idea where we need to address our attention. This is a source of insurance kind of requirement. We're required by law to periodically do our system with our budget, and I'm trying to do it every five years, so we actually touch every line in town every five years.
So what percentage of the system will this do?
So this is everything from six south to include Larriett over to Jackson. And then next year, I would plan to do up here on this side of town, the two eighty-five, and then the year after that would be the north side, and then finish up with the remainder of Terra de Sol and Sherwood. That's how we did that.
And so with the camera, does, so it's only doing our and cleaning our lines?
Yes, no service lines.
No service lines. And so does it identify issues at particular residents?
Yes.
That we can notify them that they've got, okay, cool.
So what they do, what our receivable is, they will provide us a digital report of all the deficiencies that are noted within the pipe system, plus they will provide us the actual footage. So if we need to, we can take that footage to the property owner and show them what they have in their service lines.
Are those pipes the line ones?
Every line, every city, every, every pipe in the city has been lined, so yes. So there should be very little other than the manholes. We shouldn't have any infiltration. Because we lined everything in that period between two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen. So everything's been cleaned, camered, and lined. So the only thing that we still need to do on the construction systems. And that's part of the big project with the sewer line.
I make a motion to award the twenty twenty-four sewer cleaning camera project to DRC Construction Services Inc. Then the bid price of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents to the manager Dennis to submit the contract. Been moved in seconded. To award the twenty twenty-four sewer cleaning and camera project to DRC Construction Services Inc. For a bid price of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents, and to allow Gigi Dennis, city manager, to sign the contract. Is there any discussion? Nina?
Councillor Howard.
Yes.
Councillor Lorenz.
Yes.
Councillor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Thank you, councillor.
Motion carries to award twenty twenty-four sewer cleaning camera project to DRC Services for forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents, and to allow city manager Gigi Dennis to sign the contract.
Now I want to spend some more money, please. So, so we've gotten two bids for carpet on the west side of the building and this hallway as well. And so we talked to Delmar and Wrights, and I had been come back in yesterday. Because I just wanted to make sure, because I was kind of changing my mind on a few things. We're also going to do the conference room, it's been pulling up. Make sure that the bids say what I think that they say. And so we've got a bid of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents from Light Carpet and Interiors, and we have a bid from Delmar for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and four cents. And they're both good products. Rob sat in with me yesterday as we asked him about questions, and they'll do the baseboards and all that sort of thing. Staff will have to move the furnishings. Sounds like we could get it done quicker if we went with Wrights, as far as their scheduling. Right now, we'd be on the schedule for August with Delmar. And it'll take probably two to three weeks for them to do everything. It's the carpet squares that are this on its floor. My recommendation would be that we go with Delmar Carpet. At thirty-seven, five oh eight oh four.
Delmar's the one who did Sky, right?
Correct.
Seconded.
It's been moved in seconded to have Delmar Carpet do the carpet remodel in the city hall. Is there any, for the total of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and four cents? And have the city manager sign off on it? Is there any more discussion? Nina?
Councillor Howard.
Yes.
Councillor Lorenz.
Yes.
Councillor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to award the city hall carpet installation to Delmar Carpet in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and four cents, and allow city manager Gigi Dennis to sign the contract. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Staff appreciates it.
Well, it's a party, ten thousand, seven fifty less than cleaning all the sewer lines, so.
That's a stinky deal.
I know.
No financial report tonight? All right, we'll go to staff proposal reports and actions. Can you? Come on, Jorge.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think you've probably had the opportunity to look at my annual report here. Any questions or anything going on there? We had a pretty successful year, you know, other than one incident that we had last year, which was tragic. Everything else, we get, we had the violent crime was down quite a bit last year and drug arrests, you know, significant drug arrests. We really, really went after that, and that's been very successful. They've, Michael Zeke, a ton of work on that and continue to do a ton of work on that. We are in the process of, I just got the email from the DA, of like officially establishing a part-time drug task force for the Sanos Valley, where before it was just us and Alamosa, and you guys had signed that, I don't know, you a year or so ago. But now we've kind of formalized that a lot more, we've got some grants and stuff like that for equipment and stuff. So they're going to formalize that a lot more. And we're going to bring on some of the other agencies that have like full-time investigators, and be like Alamosa, S O Alamosa P D, Monty P D, Rio Grande Sheriff's Office, and the Canales, so they all have full-time investigators. So the kind of concept kindness is that when each agency has like these bigger drug investigations, because drug investigations especially, or even violent crime investigations, those take a lot of time, so you need a lot more manpower. The idea behind this is bringing in these other investigators just to help us, and this formalizes it. It'll kind of be ran through the district attorney's office. So I and Kelly will be like running it, and then so like if Monty has something, they can request detectives from Alamosa and or Canales or Rio Grande come in and help them and stuff, and it's not going to cost anybody anything. Each agency's responsible for their own whatever, but it's just kind of a force multiplier and stuff. So that should be coming pretty quick here. Other than that, that's really just this final report here I've got, and then really, I just want to say thank you, guys. This is my last meeting with you guys. It has been pleasure being here and working with you guys. You taking the chance on me, you guys taking the chance on me a few years ago to do this stuff. It's been phenomenal working in this community, and, you know, I started here as a trooper twenty, almost twenty-five years ago, but almost thirty years ago. Yeah, twenty-nine years ago, I studied here as a trooper, and Monty's always been at the best place in my heart, and I really appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity and more so the support. Everybody on this council, I keep looking at YouTube, because YouTube has been here the whole time that I've been here, and and stuff, you guys have been supporting this and everything, and I know the officers and everything appreciate it and stuff. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, I think one of the best, one of my best accomplishments was convincing Gigi to come in. Gigi's been phenomenal, and then of course Gene, and then the staff, right? I mean, Rob and everybody here. So I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about them, because the staff here is phenomenal, and just a great bunch of people to work with. And one of the things I probably missed the most about this is just the camaraderie. We have a lot of fun here. I mean, you know, it's just silly little things, but everybody gets along, and I mean, we're just like any big dysfunctional family. I mean, there are moments when we'll piss each other off and stuff like that, but really, at the end of the day, really take care of each other, and that's kind of the whole Monavista community as a whole. You know, we, we have our ups and downs and disagreements, but at the end of the day, we always take care of each other. So I just want to say thank you, guys, for everything that you've done for us and for the police department, and they really appreciate it. So thank you.
I will say thank you, George, for everything you've brought to the city, the grants and the personnel and just what you've done for us in the last four years, so.
Not going far, so.
Seconded.
Dude, you're just a
One call away. Yep, so thank you, guys.
Appreciate you, George.
Recreation. Now you get to hear about the tattoos. Nobody knows. I think. Now what?
You got to get that kid underneath you, mine.
For recreation, we I'm out of time, by the way. We have soccer that's going on, great parks packed on Saturdays. We've got over, you know, about teams that we really should have tonight. We did our conciliatory class, we had seven students start off with, try to do them every two weeks. And adult basketball's going great. We haven't had any fights yet, so that's a good thing. So, yeah, that's all I
Sanford guys are rough, aren't they?
What's that?
Those Sanford guys are rough, aren't they?
Man. No comment. They are. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Durbin.
No way. Oh, sorry.
No report today from Kids Connection.
Sky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
You guys asked her a long question, because we obviously have something.
Thank you. I'll start you out with some numbers. So March, we had forty-six events throughout the month. April, we're on track to have sixty. May, we already have thirty-one, and so far for the year, we're at three hundred and forty. So we're slowly starting to book up and get more and more for the summer, and we'll see how that goes. We finally got our fans installed, and they are absolutely amazing. I wasn't here when they tested the hundred percent, but apparently it was really intense. So we're keeping them right around forty-ish, and it does make a huge difference in there. So I'm excited to see what it does throughout the summer and see what kind of feedback we get from events that we host.
They're pretty cool, weren't they, too?
Yeah. They're huge.
Yeah.
So stop by, take a look. You're welcome to anytime.
I kind of depends on it.
They are big ass fans. I'm not afraid to say it. I will. We had AT&T FirstNet donate three cell phone boosters to Sky High. So those are installed and up and running. We are working on getting Verizon ones, but they will not donate them, and they're a little bit more expensive. So we're rapidly looking for some outside funding to get those up and working. The hope in that is that it'll take some of the drain on the Wi-Fi so that people aren't trying to connect their phones to the Wi-Fi so that they get cell phone service inside the building. Working on it. We started, and we're about halfway done with the fencing project on the west side of the building. So it's very beautiful wrought iron fencing. Take a look. It looks fantastic, and I'm really excited to get it finished. And then we did a chain link from the backside of the McMullen building over to the grandstands or the assembly features. So over to the arena, just to provide a little bit more security over there. With that, we were finally able to move some of our BFRs on the west side to also provide some of that security that Homeland Security recommended, just to protect us a little bit more. So that side, we're working on the east side, and then we'll have to figure out what we want to do on Sherman Ave to protect that as well. The contract, or the conference I went to was absolutely fantastic. So it was called the Academy for Venue Safety and Security, and it was an entire week of me and Zeke looking at each other going, oh, we don't do that. We don't do that. We need to write that down. We should probably train on that. So we had a lot of work to do in the next year before we go back to work for the year two. But it was really great information to have, and we made a lot of great contacts to be able to reach out to for templates and suggestions as we moved forward. And the last thing I have is our next big event's coming up is Bring in the Valley rodeos. Start this Start this next weekend, April twenty-seventh, and it's the first three Saturdays in May. So rodeo season's here.
So what's the first thing you're gonna go train on and then from your comments?
Um, a lot, there's a whole lot of things, uh, we haven't done anything for. Active threats, we haven't done a fire drill, we haven't done anything like that, so I wanna start with some of those, um, and then work our way out from there. Um, we have a lot of policies to write and a lot of SOPs to write. We don't have anything written down. We'll get there slowly.
This is probably a question for you and Gigi. Did that guy from Idaho get, touch you and merge, he hasn't yet?
So let's figure from them, they were still doing some research and putting together a proposal. I'll follow up with them, because it's been a little while.
Thank you, that's all I have, anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. So who won back there between? Planning, DJ?
I know, I'm better, because I never win anyway. Good evening, now, um, still we're gonna land use code. Planning and zoning commission has agreed to at my request to try to do a joint. Uh, work session with you guys once we get the draft in, uh, completed. And so I'd like to do that, we don't have a schedule for that yet. Um, but the reason behind that is I don't wanna go through multiple. Work sessions with them to get it done and then come back and see you guys and have multiple with you and then have to go back to them because you have some change. So it makes more sense to go through it all at one time. Get it completed, one go around as far as getting you guys to review it. And then we can start working on the public hearings and those things that come after that. Um, because we still have to use multiple public hearings to get it completed. Um, so more to come with that, it'll just be, we're probably looking at. Late May and hoping to be ready for that. Uh, exterior of the building, as you know, we're still working on it, uh, I got to call for them to finish the painting, they're back this week. Uh, finishing up some concrete, the painting and those kinds of things. Uh, so still in communication, still working through that, it's, uh, it's been a little bit frustrating trying to get them back onto the schedule. Uh, but we're, we're working through it. The, we had an amazing opportunity come from CU Anshutes in combination with, uh. SLB Go. So the ditch project is something that I've been kind of working with a little bit as far as putting the ditch below grade. Um, and then putting a walking trail on top of it from the west side of town to the east side of town. Uh, including twenty-seven different bridges. Uh, is, is a huge project, it'll be approximately ten million dollars from start to finish. Uh, and our intent was to pursue engineering. And then pursue the phased approach, like we can do this section and then we can do this section and kind of work our way through. Well, there was a grant opportunity. Uh, which is for a challenge of change communities from the EPA, which the minimum ask is ten million dollars. There's multiple projects in the valley that want to apply for it with CU Anshutes, none of them. Cup, cross the threshold even combined to get to ten million dollars. So if we throw on ours, now we're at closer to eighteen million. And we can qualify to apply for that grants, uh, CU reached out to the program manager and got a very positive response, how they would like to see this application. Um, and so while I'm skeptical that I can get a ten million dollar grant on the first attempt, I'm not writing it, C is, or CU Anshutes is. Um, and they will write, manage and do the entire project from their side of it, so we would basically just be a. Um, beneficiary of it. It'll take a ton of exercise and work. Um, on our part to make sure that we get all the things that we need for the bridges and stuff to be completed. Um, the most interesting part about this one is, it is. From the first submission, it's supposed to be reviewed within thirty days. Within thirty days of them approving it, we're supposed to be funded. Within three years of the funding date, the project must be complete. Um, so this will be a huge quick project that we'll run through, um, it'll take us through. Two, possibly three winters, depending on when they get their cycles and stuff done, which we believe we can do because. As long as we're not interrupting the running season, they can do the construction throughout the entire winter. Um, because it will be precast concrete forms, uh, somewhere between seventy-two and. Uh, ninety, depending on. The flow rate that they're looking for, uh, as far as the damage. So that's a project that we're kind of working on, um.
The easements from all the property holders.
I, I don't need them.
Why?
Because the ditch company has the easement already.
Yeah, but the easement for the ditch, not for paths.
With the ditch.
Or trespass.
So it's not, it wouldn't be trespass, as long as we're on the ditch's easement and we'll be on top of the ditch.
The ditch has an easement for maintaining the ditch, not for allowing traffic through.
And that wasn't brought up by the ditch or by any of the other ones, so we'll look at that. Um, it was.
As one of the property owners, I'm bringing.
Yeah, it was my understanding is most of it sits outside of most parcels. Um, that their easement wouldn't, it wouldn't affect it since we could stay on top of it. But it is, I will put, write it down and I will ask them to start looking at that, because that will be a concern.
You have to say that again, G, so that.
So the ditch sits on top of the top, but they have an easement for a ditch. They don't have an easement for a walking path.
I was, yeah, so that wasn't brought up during the conversations with the ditch company, so. Let's talk about that. That would be interesting as well, uh, there's a whole lot of things that go on with that. Um, RFP for Sky High Design for the, or for the RV park and for the bathrooms. Uh, was issued and then this week, after the request of several consultants. Um, for a longer timeline, we did move the timeline out, uh, another, basically one, uh, city council session. So now we'll close on May ninth and then we'll be asking for your heads' decision on May the sixteenth. The fence is Sky High, Sherry mentioned, um, so the Water Smart Grant, we're still waiting for results on. Uh, had several conversations with Dola about the Loma Grant we applied for, which is the local match grants to go with the Water Smart Grant. Um, and they have not given me a solid number despite most of their requests. But the, they did say that they will more than likely fund it through Loma. Which is the local match grant, which is nice because it doesn't require a match from us. Um, but they just don't know the amount. And anything above five hundred thousand dollars is better than going through the Energy and Impact Grant because that would require half a match. Or half, half that amount of match. So we're gonna kind of continue to wait and see where all that all goes. We were told it could be as early as July, we'll find out about Water Smart, it could be as late as December. Um, there's not real clear guidance on them, there'll be, they should be good words for that. Um, remind you about the public hearing we're having on April the twenty-fifth. Uh, for. Property to get a special review use, it'll be for, uh, Dr. Roberts to have a, uh. Less impactful, non-conforming use at the property when he sells it. Um, and then we'll also be having a public meeting for, uh, short-term rentals. The same time, so it'll be August or April the twenty-fifth. The public meeting portion will probably start six, six fifteen-ish. Um, but. Our intent is to get as much information from the public as we can. Uh, so that when we do create the rules, it's what Montavista wants. If do they want a thing that says it's gonna be one every thousand feet, one every block. A total amount of this number, total of this percentage, what do they want, do they even wanna cap it? Uh, so what does the residents want and then that way we, it'll inform us when we write the land use code. Our intent is to avoid what Alamosa experienced when they attempted to place STR regulations. They had a very. A couple of very aggressive city council meetings, we wanna avoid that by asking their opinion first. Uh, so hopefully we can avoid angry people later. Um, that's all I have for today.
And update on the capstone project?
Yep, uh, talked to them today, actually, so the capstone project, the CSU landscape architect shoots. They have to present it in ten days, um, so I'll be moving on their presentations to the, uh. Professors, then they'll have a little bit of time to finalize things and things up. And then they'll be providing us with all of the, uh, information, pictures, drawings, uh, ideas and sketches. Some of them are amazing and great, some of them could be a public, uh. Public hearing, good times, I've been there, you know, some of their suggestions was to one-way some of our streets. Um, and take away some parking downtown, I'm like, no, let's not put that in there, so. It'll be interesting to see what they come up with, they had some really great ideas as far as, um, ways to make, uh, our trails or, or downtown. More vibrant to activate some places. So I think it'll be a, a good product overall, and I should have that by mid-May, I should have it in my hand. Uh, however, there are a couple of professors that are, have taken on part of the project as well, so they are not far to have it done until August. Once they provide us with all the documents, we can review and say, hey, can you clean this up or can you change these certain things? And then they will be able to do that until next February, they can make some cleaning up and change some things on the, the overall plan. Anything else? Okay. Thanks, guys.
City Attorney.
Hey, Mayor and Council. First of all, uh. Municipal court cases were down considerably this month. Uh, I don't know whether that coincides with. But, uh, the, uh. There were only twenty-one cases, uh, yesterday on the docket and, uh. I'm not gonna go through the whole litany of what those cases were, case by case with you. But, uh, generally, traffic, dangerous dog, trespassing, theft, shoplifting, kind of the usual thing. I would like to say that, uh, I don't think anybody in the city is gonna miss. George more than I am, uh, with the kind of help I've gotten from him, I can. Call him practically anytime, day or night, unless he's at a Navs game, of course, and they're about to score. But, uh, all the officers have had excellent reports and it's been a fairly smooth, uh. Prosecution with those guys and, uh, I think he's leaving the department in great shape from what I can tell, and I've talked to. Some of his, uh, lead officers there, so he's, uh, really been a credit to the city. We're gonna miss him a lot. The, uh, COG rules and regulations, uh, Nita's setting those for a public hearing on June sixth, I believe. And, uh, that's going out now, our insert is in there, group by COG, uh. I expected that hearing will be pretty short, frankly, um. And the hearing will be followed by the ordinance adopting the rules and regulations. Uh, so, uh. We will have that, and any of you that want that whole packet of the rules and regulations, I don't, I don't flood your. Computers with that stuff, but let me know, uh, probably about forty or fifty pages in there. Uh, so if you need some bedtime reading, I, I'll be glad to supply it. So, um. Down to, uh, land use. Um, I would like to be part of that, uh, joint session that, uh, DJ was talking about, uh. And I hope, uh, that we be earlier than the, uh, he was talking about the end of May, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, I could be here, I'm gonna be. Out of state, uh, oops, uh, the week before that, so, uh, hopefully maybe we can. Work that in around that schedule. Um, the, uh. So the way that the land use regs are shaping up is that we will have a chapter on, uh. Land use regulations, including the zoning code and the subdivision regs. And DJ wants to put annexation into there, so it looks like those three. Uh, and they would have separate components, we're trying to argue about whether those should be, uh, by article, by, uh. Division, uh, chapter and, and so forth and so on, so, so chat, sub, uh, sub articles, rather. Um, and so, um. That, that we've, uh, we're centering on the definitions, I think we've gotten pretty well through all those now. And we're ending up at three hundred and eighteen definitions at this point. Uh, trying to get them not too broad and not too narrow, so that they say enough to. Say what, uh, they're about, but, uh, without being verbose. So, uh, that's where we are on those, um. And, um. I'm working on the, uh. Putting together the Board of Adjustment provisions. Uh, because those have been separated into two different chapters. And we've got some inconsistent things right now, uh, in the, in the code about that, that's worrying me a, a little bit. Because we are having BOA meetings. Uh, and for example, uh, it says, our code says, where there are more than three. Senior members serving concurrently on planning and zoning commission. City council should designate in a period of three months, three planning and zoning commission members to fill the three-member board of adjustment. And then it says in twelve, three thirty. Keeping in mind that the main thing that Board of Adjustment does is grant variances. In twelve, three thirty, uh, three twenty. Says the planning and zoning commission has no authority to approve variances from the building official. And if within the providence of Article Two, the request shall be sent forward to the Board of Adjustment for hearing. So I think the code is clearly contemplating that you're going to have a separate Board of Adjustment. Uh, and, um. I was thinking about that too, that you might give consideration to broadening the spectrum of applicants for that. Uh, I didn't see anything in the statute or our ordinance, it says that. Uh, they've, uh, got to be, uh, city residents, perhaps if they own property, the only thing you've got, of course, is what you've got about the. Free member board up here when it's a planning commission. So, uh, in planning for that, I think you could broaden the applications a little if they, uh. At least own property in the city and either a city council member owns property, one or the other. They'd have an interest in the, the city that way. So, um. I'm trying to posture this now, bringing the. Chapter twelve provisions in with the chapter two provisions, so that we don't have regulations in both that overlap. And, uh. I will, uh, produce a prototype of that ordinance and, uh, for your consideration. And, uh, hopefully we can get, uh, the BOA situation. Where it's, uh, in a meaningful form, we do need it, some things in the administration portion and. Most of the regulations in the, uh, zoning portion over there. So that's the way I'm, I'm visualizing that right now. The, uh. Last session we had. Uh, we talked about, uh, First Amendment arbiters. And I've composed a regulation, Sheridan went through this, the city of Sheridan. And these guys are going around and. Uh, kinda in your face and photographing, um, your staff and all this type of thing. So Sheridan came out with a, uh, administrative order prohibiting that type of conduct and, uh, they took them up on it to the, uh. District Court, and Sheridan won. And, uh, so I sort of modeled off of Sheridans and given Gigi a copy. Uh, to look at over there, already we have restricted access signs posted up here. Uh, so, uh, hopefully, uh, we can. Address that issue, they've been here once, I think, and, uh, they're going around to different. Municipalities in the valley, Alamosa's had them also, so I'm trying to. Uh, fix that problem before it becomes a major type of thing. Where they try to snare, uh, people into saying things or, or losing their, uh, cool. And then they put them on, um, you know, Facebook and all that type of thing, so. Always fun stuff. So that's the kind of stuff I've been doing, does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. City Manager.
Poor things. Have you ever, you guys remember seeing that movie, um, Overboard with Goldie Hawn and Kurt Russell? The very end of it, the quote is, it's been a hell of a day at sea, sir. The very end of it, the quote is, it's been a hell of a day at sea, sir. Well, it's been a hell of a week in Montevista, so, so, um. I want to thank George Chief, Nate Felder, it's been a, a real pleasure. We'll miss you and you'll go on any more great things for everyone else. But remember you did a new person. Uh, George, or Chief did a very nice employee recognition. Last week and because anybody coming in new won't know some of the things that have already taken place this year. And so he had a very nice reception for his employees and their family and the, um. The, uh. Honoring and recognizing the, uh, those officers that were getting promotion. Your family doing the new badges for them, so it was, it was really nice and I think well appreciated. Because like I said, the new person isn't gonna know some of the things that have been going on. With that, there is a community reception for the chief here at City Hall and that's August twenty fourth, this next Wednesday from one to three. And then today we had, uh, had a committee and we interviewed four very good candidates for Police Chief. One local from San Luis Valley and the other three, uh, two are from within Colorado and one was from out of state. And so we'll be kind of contemplating that over the weekend and deciding if there'll be more follow-up questions or not, but it was real positive. And then I, I just want, because of the way our procurement is written, I'd like to have you guys' permission. Now, the last few years I've been able to get lots of, um. Newer used furniture from different agencies as they've been shuffling around. You should see that newer chairs now that we have in the conference room. And so we have accumulated and gotten rid of into storage a lot of things that. Some we probably need to assess and just throw away. But, um, I'd like for you guys to allow us to. Reach out to nonprofits here in Montevista or Rio Grande County first and see if any of them want any of it. Rob and I have been tossing around the idea because I keep thinking. Yard sale, but that takes a lot of work and a lot of preparation and I don't know what, you know. If the amount of overtime we'll have to pay if it warrants, uh, a profit for the city. Um, you know, as, as some of the remodeling's gone on, we've got some of these great big heavy doors that are not. Standard size and we just need to get rid of the stuff, so asking your permission to. Wean away from the procurement guidelines and just get rid of the stuff. Some of it may be thrown away, I can make it. Whatever you guys want.
Sure. Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for the nod. Yes, yes, got it. All right, so that's it. We've got a work session in this evening, thank you. Chairman Retslip and Commissioner Glover and I'm sure the other two will be coming in here quickly. And, um, so we'll adjourn and then go to the conference room and there's the county administrator, Mr. Shawn.
Thank you, Gigi. Council Committee, City Commission, and Council Report. This sort of ends.
And Chief, good job.
Victor?
Same thing, man, thank you for everything you've done. Gonna miss you here, come back.
Brad?
Sunday, fine street, it's been a pleasure getting to know you.
Mr. Howard?
Sure.
Oh, that, no, nothing else.
Chief, thank you. Fair enough. We're gonna try and time for you because of being the chief and, uh, city manager. And you did them both very well, I know it was trying, but, uh. Thank you. And with that, make sure if you see something, say something. So then don't forget to be here for, on the twenty fourth for George. And, uh, that I will say, uh, Monty Strong. And we will adjourn the meeting until May second, six P M, here at City Hall. And then for everybody else, we will have a work session. Thank you.
Weekend, everybody.